Okay, I'd like to bring this meeting to order, the Sebastopol Planning Commission Meeting of February 13th, 2024. And first on the agenda is a roll call. So, roll call, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Ottinger? I can't hear you yet.
It doesn't seem.
Oh, there you go.
Can't see the light.
So that's a here. Commissioner Burns, end of note, Commissioner Burns, consistent with state law, is joining us remotely due to a personal illness. Commissioner Burns?
Here, here.
Thank you. And thank you for joining us in your state. We appreciate that, even if remote. Vice Chair Fritz?
Here.
And Chair Fernandez?
Here.
And Commissioner Hanley is not able to make this evening's meeting. So we have a quorum. And I will note, however, that for the High Street item, we do have a commissioner that has informed me they'll be recusing themselves due to a conflict, radius conflict of living or owning property within the site radius. And so we do not have the required quorum for the High Street, 494 High Street, conditional use permit hearing. That will be continued to the February 27th, which is the next planning commission hearing when Commissioner Burns and Commissioner Hanley will be returned.
Okay. Great. Then we'll go on for comments from the public on items that are not on tonight's agenda. We'll start with anyone here, and then we'll go back and forth to anyone on virtual. So, go ahead.
Okay. Is there anyone in the room, if you would like to make a comment, not on the agenda, please come up to the podium, and you will have three minutes. We do have Susie here, who will be timing. Go on up, Carol.
Hi, I have a question. And I probably could direct it just to the planning department, but since I'm here. So if a project is sent back to the drawing board, and then it's going to come back again, does it, it started at the design review board, then it went to, I think, the planning commission, and then it was sent back to the drawing board. So my question is, does it, when it comes back, and it is going to be coming back, does it go again to the design review board first, or will it come directly to the planning department? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Stick around, I'll try to answer that as best I can. And so if there is anyone remotely who would like to make a comment for an item not on the, tonight's agenda, if you could raise your hand in Zoom, or send us a chat, and Susie will unmute you. Okay, I'm not seeing any on, oh, there we go, we have one hand raised. Susie will unmute you, you will have three minutes, and she will have a timer on the screen, if you can see that, otherwise, we will let you know when your time is up.
You hear me?
Hi, Linda, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, okay. So, anyway, gee, it's the first time I've been back, I was in the planning commission for years, and only, well, anyway, through necessity. So, first of all, you know, I'd like to speak about this project, the O'Reilly Building, the, moving the orchard there on the 6.18 building, the story, definitely not low income, two-floor bedroom, two beds, two, two-car garage, atrocities. But anyway, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody that spoke against this project, the canopy project there between Hurlbut and, and Gravemstein North, never, ever have been planned. But anyway, so, thank you for that, and also, thank you, Susie, and, and John Jay, who's just been extremely helpful, you know, and flat out giving me the entire environmental impact report, which I have gone over and found all kinds of interesting things. And I would just like to mention that this thing has been fraudulent from the get-go, from the signs, which I pass on Hurlbut every day, because I live on the corner of Hurlbut, and like 116, and I ride my bike and walk there every day, just about. And so I read the signs. Signs was posted, and it went through the, it was posted for public comment through the holidays, which a lot of the offices were closed and stuff. And the contact person was, his phone number, and his name is Darian, Darian Niner. And I called him, and it turns out that they just slapped his name on there, and he's a 22-year-old who doesn't know anything, he'd only been there for a few months, and he couldn't connect me with anybody who could give me some information, because they were gone on holidays for a couple of weeks. And he wouldn't even give me the name, because he didn't know if he should divulge that, the contact person. So I, I'm thinking that the city ventures and other companies like this might intentionally post these signs through the holidays, knowing that it, it reduces the chances of anybody opposing their project, seeing or knowing. Hey, how many, so anyway, the point is, you know, I would like to, I would like to have a 45-day extension on that, because the whole thing is fraudulent, the, a lot of the facts that came out, we don't have the infrastructure for it, the water, the traffic will just make everything a lot worse. There's like, and the sewage, we don't have the infrastructure for it, and it doesn't fit in the neighborhood. So, so I'm asking you to give us another 45 days on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the meeting room, live, who would like to make a comment? Okay, I do not see any. Is there anyone else online who would like to make a public comment? Okay, I'm not seeing any chair.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead and close public comment on items not on tonight's agenda. And item number three, any statements conflict of interest? Yes?
I have a conflict of interest for item 5B, due to proximity to the site, so I will recuse myself from that, and I guess take us out of the quorum, unfortunately.
Okay. Yeah, so what I'd like to do to, on that, just to have it, okay, we'll just continue it to the February 27th meeting, because of that. Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, approval minutes of the January 23rd meeting, 2024. Any changes, additions? Okay, I think we're good with that. One motion for approval?
I move we approve the minutes of January 23rd?
Aye, second.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Let's go ahead and call for the vote.
Commissioner Ottinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Burns? Oh, sorry.
You hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Chair Fritz?
Aye.
And Chair Fernandez?
Aye.
Okay, those motions passed 4-0, with one absent of Commissioner Hanley.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, now we move on to item 5A, the 7950 Bodega Avenue, Huntley Square time extension.
Thank you. So this item is a already approved project. It was approved by city council, and I'm sorry, I have to grab the staff report. First of all, I do want to say, John Jay is, the planner, has been working on this, he is ill, and has had a death in the family, so things have been converging within the planning department. So I am representing him, and I want to thank him for his hard work on both this and the High Street projects. The fortunate thing is he'll be back for the 27th to handle the High Street project directly. But for this one, I, I was actually here when it was approved, so I'm very happy to be handling this one. So this is a request for a two-year time extension to the approved tentative map. And just to be clear, the way, they're coming to you because of the financial markets and COVID, and the things that have been through roiling in the last couple of years. And they are here, the applicants, Beth Farley and Bob Masaro, are here tonight to give a brief presentation and answer any questions. But just in terms of context, the normal use permits and other approvals for the planning commission permits are all three years, with a one-year extension that they, that applicants can request of the planning director, or, you know, the planning staff. And then if they want another year, they can come before the planning commission for a total of five years. However, our, under state law, for subdivisions, as well as our ordinance, our subdivision ordinance is different, and it is only a two-year for a tentative map. And it, but it does allow for an extension to be reviewed by the planning commission, approved by the planning commission, even though the subdivision was approved by city council. And the other entitlements all have three years remaining on them, because they're, it's a two-year, not quite two-year-old approval. And so what they're requesting is two years, which would basically align the tentative map with the rest of the planning permits, and a one-year staff level extension. My understanding, and the applicant can get into more detail if desired, is they probably don't need the full two years, but that kind of makes sense in terms of making sure things are aligned, and they're not just coming back in a, you know, nine months or something again. So this project is for a, two residential buildings on a 0.4-acre parcel, four-ish, approximately four-acre parcel, on Bodega Avenue, 7950 Bodega. And the two buildings house five units each of what we, I would call kind of mini-town homes, all less than 600 square feet, some have lofts, some are just the ground floor area. It was approved, as noted, March 1st of 2022. And so this is a request for extension, like I said, just of the tentative map. One of the requirements for extending a tentative map is that it is still consistent with the general plan. We have not had any changes to our general plan, other than the housing element. As you know, we adopted a new housing element update about a year ago, actually, almost exactly a year ago, now that I think about it, time flies. And in that housing element, we actually did include our already approved and pipeline projects, like Huntley, like this project, Huntley Square. So these 10 units are accounted for in the analysis for infrastructure that was done at the time of the approval, as well as the, the rest of the context of the housing element. And so under state law, if we did not grant this extension tonight, and I apologize for not getting this into the staff report, this came about from a commissioner question earlier before the meeting, there could be a legal issue, because under SB 330, you need to be consistent with your housing element. At the very least, we would need to find another parcel for another 10 units of market rate housing. So this, in terms of the change to the general plan, this is actually more consistent with the housing element than the previous housing element. And so staff does find that it's consistent with the general plan. The zoning ordinance itself has not changed, and so there's no issues there in terms of the compliance. Additionally, the applicant had a zoning amendment to be a planned community, which is in itself a zoning designation that does not expire no matter what. And so that is, and they're not requiring, requesting any changes to the use permit, the zoning, anything that goes along with it. And that's not only, it's before you tonight, anyway, it's simply the extension of the time. And I will leave my presentation at that. And I will say, with that, staff is not recommending any conditions of approval be changed, the project itself has not changed, and getting into that would require significant evidence in terms of something in the community has changed that would warrant that. So with that, I will conclude my presentation. Staff is recommending approval, without any, like I said, changes to the conditions of approval.
Okay. For start off with commissioners, any commissioners' questions? Yes, go ahead.
So, so we are the approving body for the extension, that's the only, we go to council, unless it, if it's appealed, it would go to the council, but otherwise, it stops here.
Correct, yes. Yes. Yeah, that is how our subdivision ordinance works, or it's actually in the zoning ordinance for the extension of maps. And, and I do apologize, the one condition we would be changing is condition number 10, as outlined in the staff report, which would then read, the tentative map shall expire 48 months after its approval, instead of the 24.
Commissioners, I have a question. Has any work started on it? And if, when, first of all, go with that one first.
Sure. So they have done a little bit of the tree removal that was helpful for the Bodega Avenue improvement project, as well as the bird nesting season outside of the season. And I believe their building permit is ready to issue, is that correct? Not quite. Okay, but they have done some, some work on the, the building permit components of it, and coordinating with staff on some of the Bodega improvements.
Okay, good. Right, at this point, us, the applicants, if they want to make any comments, please come up to the podium.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my name is Bob Masaro. I'm here with my colleague, Beth Farley, who's the project architect, and a 20-year resident of Sebastopol. For all the reasons that so many real estate projects got delayed, we were delayed, we have moved ahead, we've, the plans are, construction documents are underway, architecture's almost done, we've actually started engineering. The major part of this project is actually the street improvement work, taking down the trees, and building the retaining wall, and widening the road, and putting in the parking, that's, that's the major part. That engineering is underway already. We would like to break ground by the end of this year, that's the plan. There's really, as Carrie says, the project hasn't changed, as far as the first time you saw it, a couple of years ago. So I'm really here to fill in any blanks and answer any questions that you may have. Hopefully, you will approve the extension, so that we can, we can build this and have some nice housing for Sebastopol.
Okay. Any questions? Yep, good. Okay. I think we're, we're good so far, no questions at this point, but.
Before I leave the podium?
Yes. Oh, yeah, sorry about that. Debbie, go ahead. Thank you.
Just curious, on a couple of weeks, when you first presented this to us, you were going to have it be intra, sorry, introductory kind of level, housing pricing, and now a couple of years have gone by, so I'm wondering, you know, what your strategies are on that, as far as like what the, the pricing, if that has changed at all. And then, you know, additionally, I was the commissioner who was talking to Carrie about, you know, what if it wasn't approved? And so my question is, if, if, and this is probably a question for Carrie, but if it doesn't break ground, if for some reason, you, you know, you don't do it, then where does that put us with needing these 10 extra, you know, units? And then, a last question for you, is when you first came to us a couple of years ago, I was like reading through my commissioner notes, and you had said that you hadn't completed all of your raising of the capital to build it yet. So I know, I can't imagine what COVID did, it must have been crazy with everything, but so are you, you know, lock, stock, barrel, like, ready to go now? Or where are we at with the process? Is two years going to be enough time? Because I, I hear, I understand that wanting to come back again.
In answer to your first question, the pricing has not changed much. It's changed a little, just because real estate prices have gone up over the past couple of years. But it still is going to be market-driven. So it's a market-based project. So when the project's done, we'll look at the market, and we'll set the pricing. We still expect it to be the least expensive new housing in Sonoma County. I think Sebastopol for sure, but, but, but most probably Sonoma County. We have raised capital in every stage. So every stage with the project, we, we raise the necessary capital. The next step is to get the plans approved, complete the final bidding and budgeting, and then go for the last round of funding, which, we've done enough communication with lenders and so on, that we don't expect this to be a problem. It's a very desirable project, in terms of new housing in Sebastopol, entry-level market rate housing. It will be zero net energy housing, it'll be ultra-low water consumption housing. So it checks a lot of boxes that, that lenders appreciate. With respect to, our plan is to start this year. So as far as the housing element question, I have to defer to Carrie on that, but we would like this to be approved tonight, so that we can keep going. We'd like to cut the trees down, actually, within the next month, on the street, before the nesting season begins. We already have a tree company lined up to do that. And then, as soon as the engineering's done, we submit it to plan check, for all the street improvements, and work with Public Works and so on. So everything associated with building this project, funding this project, is underway. Did that answer your questions, Commissioner?
Yes, it does. Thank you so much.
And Commissioner Burns, I can address the question about compliance with the housing element, what would happen? So if this was approved, my understanding of the question is, if it was approved, but the project didn't happen, what would happen? Is that?
Right, so I'm wondering if they need more time, you know, if two years is going to be, yes, but yes, basically.
Thank you. So, in the housing element world, as I always say, cities try to, are required to plan for housing, but we don't build housing, other than, there are a few exceptions to that. But generally, you know, the city doesn't build, but we do have to make sure in our housing element, that we can accommodate the number of units, which is the 213 of various income levels. And I will say, we are, of that, we actually have, in the pipeline, approved and underway, the very low and low income that we would need. So what we do need is, in fact, actually, the market rate and the moderate, at this point, in, in terms of the next eight years of housing. Not that we're going to turn down affordable housing, but just as a, as a, I hear a lot of market rate comments with the city ventures and other projects in town. It is important to have a range of housing, and that's what the state wants, and that is what we have planned for. To that end, there are a number of projects on the list, and what they are is, it's an inventory of a site that can accommodate a certain number of units. And so what we put in for this particular site was the 10 units, because we know it's already approved. If it were not to happen, that site, unless it was developed in some other fashion, would still be available for, say, another developer to pick up and do 10 units. We know it's possible on the site. And so we wouldn't, we would just leave it on our site inventory and hope, if these applicants don't do that, that someone else was able to move forward with the project. And only when, the way the housing elements work, and this is probably more wonky than anyone cares, except for Paul, because he loves this stuff, too, is we have to have enough sites to meet that 213 units, so sites, time, number of units that we have in our, and it's not 100%, you know, density on all of them, it's, it's a reasonable, what developers would likely do. If we do, say, our last housing element had the Hotel Sebastopol site on it, obviously, we did not approve that for housing. If we have a site like that, that we approve for something other than housing, then we need to make sure that we have, and we do have more than 213 units worth of sites in our current housing element. If we go, drop below that, then you are required to find another site and make sure it is rezoned, if it's not already zoned that way, and add that to your site inventory. And this is sort of a new thing from the state. If you recall, during the housing element, we actually had what we're calling the B-list, which are, we, we kind of think these are additional possible sites, and we can substitute that in at a staff level, for those that are already zoned that way, that meet the state's criteria. If other cities are having this issue where they fall below that, then they do have to rezone sites, or some communities have to rezone sites just to meet their A-list of housing sites. We are lucky in that, we do have, we're in pretty good stead that way.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. You have any other comments? Go ahead.
Chair, not a comment, a compliment, I know this is Carrie's last meeting, or next to last meeting. I've had the pleasure of working with her on this project for almost seven years, and she's great, she's amazing, and I know you guys are going to miss her. But I want to thank you for, for all the help you gave us in this project, Carrie, and I wish you well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, we'll bring it back to, for, open for public comment.
Okay, so this is the time for public comments. As the chair noted earlier, we do start with in-person, and then anyone online. So if there is anyone online, please go ahead and raise your hand. Is there anyone in the audience here tonight who would like to make a comment? Okay, seeing none. I see one hand raised, it looks like Linda. Linda, can you go ahead and unmute yourself, and you will have three minutes?
You hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So, anyway, since, again, John Jay was so generous, and just gave me the entire 700 or so-page environmental impact report, you know, I have a, a new awareness of what this is all about. And, and I've been reading, you know, the, the impacts on, on our emergency services, on our water, or our five or seven wells, the, the roads, the traffic, you know, which everybody just about acknowledges, that it is, there's a lot of room for improvement. But it is rated, according to the impact report, at 55, the quality of the roads. And so that's out of 100. So that means it's fair. And that means that it's, it's going to get damaged a lot more before, with all these projects, and especially the trucks up here at the, the Hurlbut site, the Gravemstein North site at O'Reilly, behind O'Reilly, because there's.
Linda, can you restrict your projects, your comments, to the Huntley Square on Bodega Avenue?
Thank you. So, anyway, as I've said before, at city council, it's my opinion that, that all these projects, we need to slam the brakes on these, and, and take another look at the consequences, which are going to cost us an awfully lot of money, by way of the sewers, the roads and stuff, it's going to be a detriment. You know, we've already declared a financial emergency, and this is just the road to bankruptcy, you know, continuing to let these buildings that are going to be a big, big burden on our infrastructure, not to mention all the cancer clusters, because are continuing not to recognize the harm and danger of wireless radiation, their own cell phones, the microwaves, and, you know, we've already got buildings that are cancer clusters, and they're just being ignored, even though the people have spoken out and spoken before the city, and under Larry, Larry McLaughlin, you know, he tried to do something about it, the cell tower behind the hospital, but anyway, that is a big thing. We are setting all these people up, the prospective and, and current residents of this town, you know, to get cancer, heart attacks, and strokes. And this is, this is very terrified, you know, in our firefighters, you know, they, they go out, 60% of their calls are medical, and that's new. Anyway, again, I, I think that all these things, I'm voting against, you know, the extension on this. I, I think these, these, all, all these things need to be given a, a better look, you know, step back and take a better look at, at what the consequences of all this building will.
Three minutes are up. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Okay.
Thank you, I'll recheck the room here. I don't see one, anyone else. Is there anyone else in the Zoom audience who would like to make a public comment? No, I don't see any chair.
Okay, go ahead and close public comment at this point, and bring it back to commissioners for any questions or comments, statements, motions.
I move we approve the extended, time extension request for the tentative map, with the one change to the condition 10, is, is that the condition?
Correct, based on the findings. Correct, based on the findings in the staff report.
Based on the Exhibit A findings.
Changing the condition 10. Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
And I just want to, you know, comment. I remember going through this project quite a few times. And, you know, it's a nice project and very conscientious and very well-planned. So it's just kind of type of housing that we need with the type of people that are developing it. So thank you for that. Okay, call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Ottinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fritz?
Aye.
And Chair Fernandez?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes 4-0. There is a seven-day appeal period, and after that, it becomes final. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Chair, if I may, I realize that there was a public comment question for items not on the agenda that I meant to ask to address.
Sure, go ahead and address it now.
So this is the question about the Design Review versus Planning Commission. So in the city of Sebastopol, Design Review is its own complete separate track. It is not, so we have any planning entitlements like a conditional use permit or a subdivision, the type of thing that was just in this application, does need to come to the Planning Commission, and that's appealable to the City Council. Or in certain, like when there is a subdivision, as Huntley Square is proposing and was approved, where then it goes, it gets a recommendation from Planning Commission and goes to City Council for the final hearing and decision. Usually after that, we have Design Review as a separate process because our Planning Commission doesn't do Design Review at all. For subdivisions, we do that. Or for variance or things like that, we do that after the Planning Commission approval because if there are changes requested from the Planning Commission, that might affect the design. As conditions, we want to make sure those get incorporated into the design. So I'm not quite sure which project you're talking about, but if they were at Design Review and were kicked back, that often happens with the preliminary review, which is something that someone can do voluntarily to get a sort of a study session without any decision, get input from who, the folks who will be making the decision on their project before they ever develop their full application. So I don't know if that's what, and if you have a name of the project or address, I could probably help you with that.
Well, I heard you say, I'm sorry, I couldn't get everything. Well, it's a project I'm doing for gambling and it's sort of one of those, owned by the same developer. And I believe.
The bigger site, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so that was a preliminary review to get feedback. That wasn't a hearing for any type of decision. It was just so the applicant could hear any concerns that the commission had for their part and the Design Review Board for their part. So we, I don't, I know the applicant is about to submit, if they have not already. They were in the process of gathering all their items. And actually, Suzie would probably know that. Okay, it's in the process of being submitted right now. It will come first, it will come to this body first. It will come to this body first.
It's going to come to the planning first?
Yes. Once it's gone through the Planning Commission, City Council, then they would have, for the design and tree removal, that's when they would have the Design Review Board meeting. So there's two sets of approval, and the Design Review does not, is not done by the Planning Commission. And the Design Review doesn't do the subdivision and the use permit and the other things.
Okay, so Linda did, went first with the Design Review.
Yep.
And then it went to the planning.
Yeah, it doesn't matter which order that happens in. It's, because that's just a study session. That's just a, hey, here's our idea. What do you think? It will come to Planning Commission first, correct.
And if you have to change, you'll go back to the Design Review.
After, yes, it will definitely go to Design Review, yes. And I believe you're in the notice area, so you'll get a notice of these.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you're in the notice area. So you'll get a notice of it, and they will have the big blue Notice of Intent to Develop poster on the site with those dates.
And, yeah, and then all those meetings, of course, will be public comment available for that. All right, thank you for that. And moving on to Item 6A, vehicle miles traveled thresholds.
Thank you, Chair Fernandez. And I am asking Ian Barnes, our, the principal from Fair and Peers, who is working on this project with us to join us up here. Have been working closely with him on this. Just for background, this is a project which we did receive a state grant to do. So yay, us, to implement a state law, SB 743, which does require that for environmental review, level of service is no longer utilized for sequo impacts, for the environmental impacts. Because you can resolve level of service by just building more and more and more roads. Doesn't help with the greenhouse gas, doesn't help with this. So it's taking vehicle delay, like how long you're sitting in a traffic light, out of that question, and instead looking at vehicle mile, miles traveled, VMT, which is based on per resident per day or per office worker, per day?
Yes, correct.
Thank you. This is why I have the expert sitting next to me. And that really is how much more or less do people drive based on the particular development. So you put a development way out in Camp Meeker, they're going to be driving a lot more than if they're in downtown Sebastopol. They're probably going to be driving more in downtown Sebastopol than they are if they live in Oakland, middle of Oakland. Not necessarily, but that's, you know, I'm talking about like, I guess I'm just using that because I used to live in Oakland close to Bart, so. Or Berkeley close to Bart, either one. So that's what we're doing. And just as a reminder, so this is for SEQA. And we did have a preliminary hearing discussion with the Planning Commission a while back. We also took that information and your preliminary recommendations to the City Council a couple of weeks later. And they did concur with all of the Planning Commission's direction on that. Specifically, we need to, under the state law SB 743, and I should shut up and turn this over to you, let me now. We need to set a metric that we're going to be 15% below. That is what the law is looking for in terms of new development, not having any impacts under SEQA. If you do, then you need to mitigate it to the point where you're, you can reach that 15%. And so what the City Council agreed with the commission on was to use the city VMT for residential development, which I'm sure you can kind of go over those numbers and what that, what that means a little bit more. And to use the Bay Area VMT average for office and industrial? Yes. And so that's what we, he's incorporated, and we've worked into this memo. There's a couple of other things that we will be kind of talking about, such as potential mitigations and a couple of other things. But we are here tonight with the final memo for your review. If you have any modifications, we would like direction on that. If you, ultimately, this, we're hoping that you recommend this to the City Council for adoption. And if we would incorporate any changes or modifications into the final document to go to Council and a resolution to bring back to you at your next meeting. And that resolution would again be, hopefully, recommending it to City Council. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ian.
Great, thanks, Carrie. Well, I think as Carrie noted, the thresholds and approach here outlined in the memo are really following with what a lot of jurisdictions in Sonoma County and around the state are doing. The reason for that is because with the switch to VMT for SEQA, the state actually came out with a lot of guidance and a lot of evidence to support a certain set of thresholds and methods. That's really important because SEQA is an evidence-based process. And in this case, really what the whole intent of the law is to promote infill development, promote healthy communities through active transportation, and help the state meet its greenhouse gas reduction targets under AB 32. And so the state evidence, which is summarized here along with your feedback and City Council feedback, is based with that underlying evidence in mind. These thresholds have not yet been successfully challenged or overturned by the state. You know, SEQA can be challenged in courts. So with a lot of other agencies throughout the state, large and small, adopting these thresholds, there is a little bit of strength in numbers in this as well. In order to calculate VMT, Planning Commission and City Council recommended the use of the Sonoma County Transportation Authority model. That's the home model. Another option would have been to use the MTC Bay Area model, but it doesn't have a lot of detail in Sebastopol. It's like two or three roads and two or three amalgamated zones within the city, whereas the SCTA model has substantially more detail there. As Carrie mentioned, the metrics that we use for residential are residential VMT per resident. So it's a scaler metric, and it has to do with the amount of driving done by each person in that residential development. For office and employment-type uses, it's commute VMT per worker, per day. For retail, it's a little bit different. It's total VMT for the site and whether or not that project increases overall VMT or decreases overall VMT across a geography. The reason that being that when retail opens up, if you think about what's going to cause people to drive less, it's providing a diversity of goods and services within the neighborhood. You know, if there was a certain establishment that was only found in Santa Rosa, per se, and everybody had to go drive to Santa Rosa to go to that location, well, if a similar location opened up in Sebastopol, people wouldn't have to drive as much. Thus, you'd see a drop in VMT and a less-than-significant impact. Stop me if I'm going a little too fast through here. So then, as Carrie noted, the primary thresholds of significance for residential, 15% below the citywide average. For office and employment-type projects, 15% below the Bay Area regional average. And then for retail projects, it's no net new change. For other projects like hotels or for a mix of uses, sometimes you have to mix and match thresholds. But really, it's residential projects use a certain type of threshold, employment-focused projects use a certain type of threshold, and retail and other projects use that net zero threshold. Obviously, as specific projects come up, city staff will make a determination what the right threshold is to use. But this document will go a long way towards providing that guidance and clarifying, clarifying which threshold to use. There is also a provision here in the document, and this is true statewide, to screen projects. And screening means that if a project is sufficiently designed or located in a part of a city, or a part of the city that's low VMT relative to that threshold, they can just say, hey, we're in a low VMT area off the map, which are included in the appendices. We don't need to go through a full-blown VMT analysis to prove that we have a less-than-significant impact. We can just presume it. And there's a number of categories in this document. First one, screening for small projects. So small in terms of trip generation, less than 110 trips per day, very small. That usually works out to about 15 units or less for a residential project, or 10,000 square feet or less for a non-residential project, like an office building. The second is screening for local-serving retail. So the state guidance is 50,000 square feet or less could qualify for screening. Most agencies throughout the state say that is way too big. And the recommendation from Planning Commission and City Council was to study a lower amount. Based on, I think those discussions, and Carrie, feel free to hop in here. I believe it's based on the use permit requirements. That 50,000 was reduced to 15,000. So kind of getting it in line there with what the use permit guidelines are for the city. The third screening criteria, which doesn't apply to Sebastopol at this stage, but may apply in the future, is screening for proximity next to a major transit stop. In this case, major is actually defined in the Public Resources Code as a bus stop with 15 minutes or less headways. One day, we could wish that Sonoma County Transit runs that frequently or being next to a smart station. So unfortunately, not necessarily here in Sebastopol. The next criteria is screening for projects in low VMT areas. That's that map-based approach, using the maps in the back of the memo. You'll note, or you'll see in the, with those various maps, there's a map for 2024, 2025, and 2026. In SEQA, the baseline value for the citywide average or for the regional average rolls forward over time. You don't get to just go pick the base year of the model, which is 2019. You actually have to roll the baseline forward. So we've provided multiple maps so that the city can have multiple maps over time. We stopped at 2026 because SCTA will be updating the model circa 2025 into a new model. So you didn't want to go too far, but if additional maps are needed, they're pretty easy to create going forward. Maps are provided for residential projects and for, and for employment-focused projects. We'd also note, too, that if a project is inconsistent with the underlying data or if city staff, you know, kind of have some questions about any of these screening criteria, they always reserve the right to say no thank you to screening and require that a, that a project applicant complete a VMT analysis going forward. The last screening is screening for affordable housing. The city may screen projects in infill locations that are 100% affordable on the basis that affordable housing does generate less VMT per capita. So that's another potential screening criteria there. So again, with screening, that takes a project out of a SEQA transportation section, VMT analysis. They don't need to go run the model necessarily. They don't need to come up with mitigation measures. It's kind of a bit of a bypass around that. That does not mean that a project screens out of needing to do air quality analysis or greenhouse gas analysis. That is a difference, those are different SEQA topic areas. And so you don't get to bypass out of those with the, with the screening criteria. The next section in the memo is about VMT thresholds of significance for transportation projects. So back, back under the days of level of service, adding bike lanes or pedestrian infrastructure could trigger a level of service impact. That's flipped around now, where bicycle improvements, transit improvements, pedestrian-focused improvements are no longer, they're screenable out of SEQA analysis because they encourage people to walk and bike and take transit rather than drive. Instead, it's projects that widen roads or make driving easier, which tend to increase the amount of VMT over time. Those would be subject to induced, into VMT analysis and potential mitigation. The threshold for those projects is any net increase. Finally, as Carrie noted in kind of the next steps document, we received feedback from this body, as well as the City Council, to provide some initial mitigation strategies. There's a big workbook or handbook that Fair and Peers, amongst other sources, actually worked on to define how effective certain VMT mitigation strategies are. So that's linked here in the memo. That changes over time. There's caveats with those. And so I think we've noted some of those in the memo here so that city staff can ask the right questions going forward as mitigation measures come in. But ultimately, where we're seeing a lot of agencies and regions of the state go is a VMT banker exchange program, which is where something, an agency like an SCTA can look at pooling funds together to really implement very high-impact VMT mitigation reduction measures, spread throughout the county. But it's a lot easier to band together on VMT reduction rather than try and go piece by piece by piece. A parallel to this is it's really hard to build out a sidewalk network, project by project by project. It's easier if there's a development impact fee sometimes, and you get long stretches built at the same time. It's going to take a little while to go through. And, you know, it'd take probably a couple of years for SCTA to do that. They did receive a grant funding from the Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant Program to develop that exchange program for its member agencies going forward. So on the horizon, it's just going to take a little bit of time. I will stop there. I know that's a lot of information. Happy to answer any questions as we go forward.
Yeah, I will note, if you have any question about the maps...
Yeah, I will note, if you have any question about the maps, I can bring them up on the screen. So I'm seeing a nod. Do you want me to do that? Okay.
And I will first admit with these maps that we might change the color coding. It's just, uh, sometimes, you know, for accessibility issues, we choose some interesting color codings and I'm happy to walk through these. So up here on the screen right now is the, I believe this is the year twenty twenty-four map. So the map that would be in force right now. Areas that are in blue, um, meet the low V M T, uh, criteria. Um, a, a residential project in that blue zone would have a, um, would have a V M T value of nine, of nine point six. That is less than fifteen percent below the citywide average of fourteen point two. Areas in green, and this is where I think we may need to change, sorry?
V M T of seventeen point one.
Seventeen point one.
The current seventeen point one.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Okay, sorry. Our current V M T is seventeen point one miles per resident.
Oh, sorry. That was the V M T in the base year model.
Got it. Okay.
We've updated the numbers based on the latest model. I'm sorry. So it stands right now with the current version of the model for year twenty twenty-four. The citywide average is fourteen point two. Sorry. Um, I think previously when we presented here to Planning Commission, uh, there was a different number that was based on twenty nineteen, an older run. Uh, SMART wasn't seeing the same ridership that it did and just, you know, travel patterns have been switched around and other projects have come online. So going back to the map here, the blue zone, uh, you know, you could screen a project out of that zone for residential, uh, provided meets the similar character to other residential in that zone. Areas in green, um, are between that zero percent below the average and fifteen percent below the average. That's generally where mitigation is feasible for suburban and rural communities. Usually we color that in a gold or yellow zone. You still need to run a full V M T analysis in what's currently a green zone. But it may eventually meet mitigation, uh, requirements going forward. Areas in red are still need a full V M T analysis, but they're going to need more mitigation to get there and mitigation all the way down to below the threshold may not necessarily be feasible. So there may need to be some project design strategies needed to reduce V M T and, you know, the developer or the developer's, uh, traffic consultant need to provide the evidence, uh, to get down there. So, um, really it's the blue zone here for residential that is the main screened out area. Whereas other areas of the city per this map, you know, will need some V M T analyses going forward.
And go ahead. Sorry.
So I guess I, I'm just kind of curious how these maps are generated because I can take a look and I can sort of make an assumption about the blue area being that there's not very much residential down there and one of it is a senior mobile home park.
Yes. And so that is actually, I do want to, that was what I wanted to make a comment out about because when these maps first came out, I was like, well, exactly that, right? And so that is where the, and Ian can probably has the exact language memorized. A project would need to be similar to the major use in that zone. And so if it's not a mobile home park, then it's not necessarily going to get a, uh, yeah, go ahead. That's where we as staff, just like with any sequo review of any project, if there's, I mean, I've done a initial study M N D on a single family home because it had a former landslide and it was a, it's like seventy per cent slope, right? So like single family in a single family zone is normally exempt. But in that particular case, there was a need to do additional work. So this, the, this is where, you know, if it was an expansion of the mobile home park, yeah, probably makes sense. But if it's something that's, you know, more sense of it, yeah, it's difficult.
Yeah, I will use, I will use this example just as a very, very high level example. Please do not run with this, but if you had large scale estate, three car garage developments out there, that's not really consistent with the development in character in that zone. And to the commissioner's question about how are these maps generated? So they are based off the, the math and the model. However, underlying the model was, and I believe this is actually linked in the staff report, a very, um, a big data study, um, to help ascertain what the travel flows and relative amount of travel is from each zone in the model to the rest of the world, as well as where those places are coming from and going to. Um, we don't completely fit the model to that data because that's an overfit condition. But that is a very unique thing that the S C T A model has that more models are getting into now, but they provide a little bit more realism to the travel patterns, um, in the model. Ultimately, that feeds the base year model and as the city builds out under the general plan or the rest of the world builds out under various general plans, um, the model math changes and reflects that going forward. So that's why as you scroll through the maps, if you go to twenty twenty-five, uh, the numbers change a little bit and you go to twenty twenty-six, the numbers change a little bit. Generally speaking, uh, just like most agencies, most agencies are getting more V M T efficient and sustainable as they go forward over time. And that's why the rolling baseline aspect is so important. Because if you, you know, when we were in twenty twenty, you could probably use the twenty nineteen model and be okay. Twenty twenty-four, it's been five years, things are different now. And so, um, you know, you, you need to roll it going forward and that's true for a lot of sequo topic areas. You don't get to go backwards just because it's convenient.
Yeah, and I will note the, uh, the council was also happy with the S C T A model, which I mean, I think just for the level of detail and the ease of use, which makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, the S C T A model and the grand spectrum of models is fast. It's efficient to use and, um, it's not so big that projects get lost. Yeah. Yes, detailed for Sebastopol. And of course, I'm one of the builders of the model. So I'm biased in that statement, but it's, uh, very useful compared to the big Bay Area model.
So I have another question just about, so, so just trying to understand how this works. So if you're proposing a project in one of these red zones, that's already over the average, then you would be kind of, that would in itself would trigger a V M T analysis or?
Red or green. So you don't get to bypass out of a V M T analysis.
So if you're building a single family home, pretty much anywhere in Sebastopol, except for the blue zone, you have to do a V M T.
Unless you qualify for other screening. So like a single home, yeah, it's a, that's a small project. So, if you qualify for any of those screening criteria.
So that's the, that's the hundred and ten trip thing that you could screen out of.
Correct. Okay, yeah. And that's, uh, and that's consistent with the way that traffic studies under level of service have been done in a lot of cases where you need to generate a certain number of trips before you trigger that analysis needing to be done.
Right. And the threshold in Sebastopol has generally been ten units, even though the fifteen is the, the V M T threshold. And so by county square, even though it was only ten units and half units in terms of our density, we did do a traffic study on that. Uh, and I do want to know, that was level of service because that's where we were at that point. But, uh, we still do do the level of service just to make sure any area specific, you know, the driveway, uh, coming and going, um, and or any new, you know, proposed access to the site as well as impacts locally to make sure there isn't, you know, issues with any specific improvements for that particular project. So it doesn't mean we can't do the level of service. It means it's not a sequo environmental, uh, criteria. Uh, and then of course we still collect a, uh, for all development, we collect a traffic impact fee to help implement those improvements like the Bodega Avenue improvements and, uh, some of the others around town.
Maybe we could, uh, flip over to the employment map, which is going to look, uh, a little bit different than the residential map because we are.
Put you on the spot for just a second?
Yeah, sure.
Um, so in this map that I have up right now, um, the, I can kind of get a sense of why some of the neighborhoods are red. Uh, this is sort of the, the fun, why is that like that? Right? So I get, I get the blue, it's senior housing. Yeah, they're typically, you know, carpooling or taking less trips. There's also a grocery store directly across the street. Um, the Valentine covert west side of town. And a lot of that is not walkable to downtown. So I kind of get that. But, and, and same with the first street, there's a lot of areas that don't have sidewalk or great connectivity down there and, and Lynch Road area, Furcrust. I am curious, the, the, between Furcrust and downtown, including Ives Park. So that area, which is very central, has a lot of smaller lots with direct access to downtown, uh, Furcrust. And, um, I guess Furcrust is probably the only the biggest grocery store or closest grocery store, I should say, other than Safeway. Why do you think that has a higher V M T than some of the other areas of the town?
That is a very good question. So there could be any number of factors. And I do actually think that, though, this kind of goes back to the big data aspect of the model development in the first place. Rather than purely trusting the model math, it's seeded with real world data. So perhaps folks in those zones, you know, have to, you know, they're more prone to driving a bit further for their commutes, for example. Um, you know, when you think about all the trips that somebody makes over the course of the day, that is, I think, part of, uh, part of that as well. So whether it's the commute trips or then the trips to the grocery store, there's a lot that kind of goes into there. And I think the other part of this too, and this is again, part of the guidance here is, you know, when in doubt, do a model run. This is a, this is a pick off the map to say, is it below? Is it, is it below fifteen percent below the citywide average for this metric? I would not get so hung up potentially on the exact numbers being shown. We provided them for context. But ultimately you want to use the tool that, you know, obviously the document here prescribes in order to see how that project would actually fare, um, going forward. So, you know, again, this model is, well, not so much unique anymore, but it was unique at the time of its development around, you know, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty in terms of its use of big data. And, um, you know, what that means is that there is a little bit more, I would say realism in terms of the numbers that the models are producing, especially earlier in there. So could be related to, uh, again, did not look into this, but could be related to household income, auto vehicle ownership.
Well, and there is less road connectivity in the southwest part of those areas. Like the, um, call, when you, once you get up to Cauldron and stuff, it's kind of hilly too.
I'm curious just how, how are these, um, kind of each zone, the boundaries were established? Because the one that's curious to me is the, one in the northeast corner that is mostly open space. It's very strange to me.
Yeah. So I know Carrie, Carrie and John had the exact same question for me. So the boundaries, um, in a lot of cases, maybe like the one up near, uh, Hurlbut and, uh, one sixteen. You know, you can see that's not, that zone is not completely consistent with the city limit line. And that's because they're really drawn to group together various land uses. And our discussions that when this, a model update process from S C T A does come to fruition in the, in the next couple of years, there will be in a, there will be an opportunity to adjust those boundaries. And S C T A, Chris Barney and his staff in the planning department there, uh, highly welcome that feedback, um, going forward. So for example, the zone with the Barlow, that includes the zone that we're in right now, uh, crosses over the Laguna. But there's also not a land, a lot of land uses on the other side of the Laguna. That zone ultimately connects to the roadway network, you know, potentially along Morris, for example. So, we kind of, we look at the, there's the overall zone, but what's not shown here is where the center of gravity or the centroid is for that zone. And we try and place that in the center of the development or the center of the developed area. So as you can see here, just kind of the numbers and colors change over time, but what's really consistent is the mobile home park zone there on the southwest corner of the city is really where you get that demonstration of fifteen percent below the citywide average consistently. And, you know, in most parts of the city of V M T analysis is going to be required. That is not atypical of a jurisdiction without high frequency transit or without a super dense downtown San Francisco nearby, uh, just truth be told. But then as we go to the employment map, so this is where the, um, this is where actually the use of the regional average actually clears out most of the city for employment focused uses. If you think about it, it kind of makes sense, right? I'll, if you're, if you're working in Sebastopol, you're probably living pretty close to Sebastopol versus people are committing, who are commuting from Brentwood to San Francisco, who are in the average or people from Santa Rosa to San Francisco. Although I guess, uh, I know a lot of people still do that these days, but I think it's about four percent of the city's trips go to, uh, commute trips go to the city. Uh, but so in this case, as you know, the, the base metric to our nine county regional metric changes, the, um, you know, the map has changed, um, as well. And so, um, it may seem a little bit odd that, you know, kind of the zone that we're in right now is not all the way down. It's pretty close. It's nineteen versus twenty point four six. So, which is the, the regional average, we got to get below there. So what it just means is projects in those zones, you know, are likely to be mitigatable, but they just can't screen out of a V M T analysis on the basis of this map alone.
Right. And this doesn't necessarily surprise me. It has the high school and teachers live all over the place. Has the Barlow, which has a lot of folks coming from, you know, workers coming from, yeah, other locations. And then it does have the, a little bit of the downtown core as well, which again tends to have, you know, the Whole Foods and the, uh, uses on the square may tend to have, um, workers coming from elsewhere.
And I could see like, because even, you know, the zone that's on the west side of Main Street that has the Safeway and like that as, that's the highest number in Sebastopol. So it is kind of makes sense that, I mean, it's the highest after the nineteen with the zone we're in. You know, so it kind of makes sense because it is a, it's an employment center. And so there are going to be people coming from other places where some of these other zones are mostly residential. So there's really not an employment factor there.
Exactly.
And the seventeen point four, what, what area is, or what is that?
That's like Furcrust and that.
Furcrust and this elementary school down there.
And the, and the, you know, where what, that used to be Starbucks.
And then Anchor Coffee. Yeah, we're hole in the wall and Anytime Fitness.
Shopping center. Yeah.
Yeah.
So that, again, that's a bit of a node, I think.
And so that, that zone there on the west side of one sixteen, you know, in the twenty twenty-four map, it's right on the cusp of blue to green, and then it eventually goes into green as, you know, as things go over time. So that's kind of how, again, illustrating why the rolling baseline is important. Because, uh, you know, if you, in twenty twenty-six, if you tried to go back to the twenty twenty-four map, you might screen out when maybe that's not the most defensible decision going forward.
So can I just point, I, I think the twenty, twenty five, uh, the twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six maps incorrectly labeled because they both say home based V M T and not commute based.
Oh, yep, we need to. Hey, there we go.
Really throwing me off as I was looking at that. I was like, how do we have the same home base? It's different.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And again, we'll clean up the coloring on here just because I know everybody thinks green is good. Whereas in a lot of cases for travel modeling, we use red for high, like hot and blue for cold. Uh, it's usually that middle color where we get into trouble and green's usually the middle color, but that can assign a.
I think yellow makes sense.
Yeah.
I always go by the stop signs where green, green is go, yellow is you good concern and, and red and, and red is, and red is still. Hey, watch out.
I'd forbid the traffic engineer doesn't get red, yellow, green on the person.
So I have a question about the, um, the mitigation strategies. So the, so you're, that's kind of a list that, so if someone, you know, a project comes forward and they don't meet the fifteen percent reduction in base V M T, then they have to go through those mitigation strategies and pick them out. And there's some kind of metric assigned to each one that then that gets applied and some formula that knocks their V M T down.
Yeah, so.
Based on what they choose.
So S C T A actually developed a calculator for that and plug, we developed that, um, based on the handbook. Where I think that we sometimes see this go awry and where some challenges have kind of come about over time is the applicability of those, uh, mitigation strategies to projects over time. And we listed a couple here where it's, you know, one of those where you need to justify the use of these and actually make sure that they happen. One unique thing about V M T that's very different from level of service is when you mitigate for V M T, you have to monitor it for effectiveness. Back when we were doing level of service, if we install a stoplight instead of a stop sign, we're very sure that is going to work. If you install a left turn lane, we are very sure that that is going to work. V M T mitigation is a little bit. V M T mitigation is a little bit tougher to prove and thus you must monitor it. And that's a, again, not a, necessarily a new concept in CEQA for other topic areas. It's just very new in the transportation section. And so getting performance out of the V M T mitigation measures is really important because courts have started to rule on performance standards already. So I know we've been talking a lot about that with city staff, certainly, uh, land use attorneys well aware of that. But that's a very unique thing that we never really had to face in, uh, the traffic section of CEQA that now we do.
So with the Canopy project that we just reviewed and they did have a V M T analysis. I can't remember, did they come up below the threshold or did they have some mitigation measures that helped them meet the threshold?
They came, but I believe they came below the threshold.
Okay.
And, you know, but if they did need mitigations, they do have, obviously they are right on the trail. And that's a safe route to school, all the way down to Annalee and obviously right across to the charter school, the within walking distance of Lucky's. Uh, and they have a bicycle repair station. And then of course staff was recommending that there be a pedestrian bicycle exit on the Hurlbut side. Just again, to make sure that that pedestrian and bicycle connection was there to help discourage, you know, or encourage that as an alternative mode. And, and I will say, just from personal experience, uh, so I recently sold my car because I'm not going to need it anymore. And I've been using basically car sharing, ride sharing with my, or car sharing with my husband. And I've been bicycling to work more because hey, you know, if I can leave him the other vehicle and just take my bicycle, which I can do. So, you know, the ride sharing or the car sharing kind of a thing is, I, I would say it's just from what I've seen and I had used car shares when I lived in Berkeley and things like that. It, it does actually help in that sense of stuff.
I mean, if we had a car share in Sebastopol, I would get rid of one of my cars. Like if we had like a citywide, like I have two cars, I hardly ever need two cars. I mean, I'm sort of throwing that out there. If anyone wants to start a car share program in Sebastopol, I would sign up. But yeah, I, I think it would encourage, it does encourage people to.
Right. And I did actually have a car share before I owned a car individually with a, a friend of mine when I lived, yeah, when I lived in Berkeley. And I would just go pick up the car if I was on kayaking and needed a way to transport my kayak. Otherwise it didn't. And I think this actually gets to what Ian was talking about with the, the mitigation bank potential. So that is, so there's a couple of different ways to look at this. One is sort of the onsite, what can you do? Well, you know, you could have a car share as part of a development, right? Or you could, um, you know, obviously make sure that the bicycle pedestrian network connections are there, the things that are in here. But citywide, what could we do? And, you know, as I talked, in discussing this project with Ian, I was like, yeah, you know, folks in Sebastopol, they don't want to just write a check. They want to do locally, act locally. That's the, the, you know, the, the herd of Sebastopol. So I want to make sure that, yeah, how do we figure out what we could do locally? The S C T A had, did get the grant to look at a mitigation bank. I think, is that just for Sonoma County or within Sonoma County?
Yeah, just within, uh, for its member agencies.
Okay, for the member agency. So that's basically everyone in Sonoma County. And yeah, if people are trying to get to Santa Rosa and back for work and, you know, is there a way to do a car share or ride share program that is supported by, um, people who need to mitigate? And, you know, I do know that our climate action committee has actually, they were approached by Bird, the scooter sharing company. At the end of that, they decided, they kind of said, you know what, scooters, not so much in Sebastopol. But if we had an e-bike share, that might actually be a better program. And our, the, you know, the, the e-bike share people are sort of overlooking Sebastopol at this point because we're kind of too small for them. So, but if there was a way to do that, and maybe it's local with the bike shops and it's because you can already rent bikes for, you know, tourism purposes at the, just on the street on Morris. So to me, there's a lot of potential in how to do some of this stuff locally. And that's where, you know, if we talk about it more as a city and have projects ready to go for that mitigation bank, it, you know, it's not just for our impact fees or our, you know, developers here, but could it approve the overall network?
So is that, um, so again, if the Canopy project or it's a project like that came forward and they were over the 15%, if they didn't meet that threshold, they could either do something onsite or they're saying they could sort of pay into this bank that then would do a bigger project like citywide. Does that?
Yeah, it doesn't exist yet, but I'll let Ian describe it all.
So the bank and exchange program has two real key benefits in my mind. The first is you're kind of pre-clearing the mitigation effectiveness under CEQA at the time that the bank is established, rather than each project proving that you're not double counting mitigation, you're not double counting what's coming out of the model and really having to go through, I wouldn't say an onerous process, but a process that, you know, you need to produce evidence. Whereas, um, and then after you mitigate, then you have to monitor it. And so that's a ongoing, that's potentially an ongoing thing that the site operator or the developer has to keep doing over time. And that's pretty settled case law now. Not just for V M T, but for other things. Whereas for a bank and exchange program, the implementing authority, so like an S C T A is ultimately responsible for clearing everything under CEQA, monitoring going forward and monitoring the performance. So, you know, I, I wouldn't presume, you know, for, for the city, but I feel like that there's some benefits to that in terms of, uh, you know, adopting that, uh, basis as a mitigation strategy. And just speaking with developers throughout the state, providing certainty with regards to mitigation and CEQA just goes a long way. And just kind of streamlines things for everybody going forward, rather than going piece by piece, project by project.
Yeah, the, it's, it's basically a cap and trade. And it's, it's how it works. The same way as the cap and trade for emissions stuff does. If you can't reduce it onsite, you can pay for someone else to do it elsewhere. And people have done this with, for density trades, uh, but, uh, transfer of density, uh, rights. And, uh, they've also done it for environmental mitigation. I actually worked for a city, uh, just outside of Portland that was, you know, on the river and got money for environmental mitigation through a bank like this. And so it, um, so the thing for me is, yeah, if it's, and, and S C T A wouldn't do this. If it was like, oh, well, we're just going to take all the money and give it to Smart. Well, that doesn't really help with this other kind of more detailed nuance network, which is what would benefit our city, our residents. And so, you know, how does that, or, you know, people getting anywhere other than Smart. Right? That last mile, the second to last mile, the last 10 miles. So that's where, yeah, and, and this is one where, um, and I know I'm, you got to foot a little bit out the door. But think, I, I encourage you all to think about what things might work for the city. Like I said, the e-bike, bike share has already, the climate action committee's transportation group has already been looking at that. They're not working on it right now, but I think it's certainly a potential. I mean, I know that I would drive certain areas if I didn't have an e-bike. The, and yeah, and so some of the, and there are things that are not on this list, I'm sure that are, things that would be great ideas. And this community is really known for ingenuity and ideas. And that's where I kind of go, oh, you know, we got to get people talking about this. And, and be poised and be able to give input to S C T A.
I'm curious about the, the scooter issue and how, why they decided that maybe wasn't good. Cause I can just see, maybe not for everybody, but I can see a lot of like younger people really being able to use that to get around town more regularly.
I can talk about that if you want. Oh, or Carrie, you're there. What am I talking about?
No, I think, Debbie, I think you as the climate action committee rep for the liaison should absolutely talk about this one.
We, there was a lot of back and forth about it. I think ultimately what we looked at was population of Sebastopol and that, you know, there isn't a large younger population. We also looked at some of the safety issues around it and what happened in other communities when they did have the scooters. And, um, just all in all, it seemed like with our, um, with our overarching population leaning towards being older and not having a younger, you know, population who was finding it, what the demographics were, what the safety issues were. There was a lot of issues with, um, sorry, there was a lot of issues around, a lot of issues around, um, who would run it in the city as well. So just all in all, the whole package wasn't as simple and it didn't feel like it was a good fit for Sebastopol. However, I think as Carrie mentioned, you know, we thought bike shares or other things would be fantastic for our community.
Uh, yeah, I think a couple of the other things that I heard was just the park, the parking. There's been a lot of sort of like, where do you park and block sidewalks with the scooter stuff? There's a pretty well established bike parking around town. Or if you're like me, sometimes you chain it to a tree, then you lean it against the tree and it's not blocking the sidewalk at all. The, and the other thing was just with the topography that more people might feel comfortable with the hills and things on a bicycle than a scooter.
Oh, there was one other thing that, um, you know, people do come here to, to, to drink. You know, we've got the Barlow, which has, you know, um, some very popular, um, you know, um, designations for, for drinking and then also wineries being local. And there's no way to mitigate whether somebody has been drinking or not if they, so that was another issue we looked at as well.
I was going to say, am I on the, there's a business model too, for the person who's managing the system. I think they had problems with that, but you also have enough bikes to make it worth their while. And then if it's worth their while, they need to have enough staff to repair and replace and maintain those bikes. So it just didn't fit for.
The operational.
For the business model.
Yeah, the business model and the operational is a real sticking point. Yes, definitely.
So maybe, you know, golf cart rentals might be a little better.
What was that?
That was actually suggested at some point. I'm not sure if they're legal on state highways, which is of course a problem here. I, I think we did look into that and someone had, had made that comment when that.
Yeah. And if they were allowed like on the Redota Trail, being easy, commute to Santa Rosa.
Right. And so, yeah, so what is allowed? I mean, you know, you know, e-bikes are allowed on the, the county trails. They have a 15 mile hour speed limit, which is what any pedal bicycle has as well. And, you know, certainly there have been some concerns from some folks about the e-bikes on the trails and, that's something regional parks deals with. But yeah, it is, you know, it's not a, like the golf court wouldn't be allowed on a trail.
Right. Um, so let me see if I can, this example, so let's just take the Canopy project. If it was level of service.
And I am actually going to discourage you too much from talking about the Canopy project because it is a project that will be coming before you.
Yeah, I'm just, right. I'm just going to, yeah, this has nothing to do with, with any of that.
That site.
Okay. How about a, a, a project somewhere in, in Sebastopol? And, um, so level of service might be, okay, well, you're going to need to put a stoplight or you're going to need to widen the road and so forth. So, uh, versus, uh, uh, V M T, it would be something like, uh, you need to put a bus stop, shelter or something that would encourage more commuting and less driving. Is that kind of how that would work?
Correct. Another way to think about it is, uh, you want to be reducing the V and reducing the M in V M T. So reducing the amount of driving and reducing the amount of distance that people have to drive. So, you know, in a lot of cases, that can be getting people out of their cars into carpool. You know, getting people into transit, uh, or providing a mix of uses onsite. You can take credit for having some, you know, neighborhood retail onsite for a mixed use project. Ultimately, you know, another question that always comes up is, is there supporting infrastructure to make that happen? So, um, you know, do the bike lanes go somewhere? You know, like the West County Trail heading out towards the high school, uh, for example, or the Joe Redota Trail. What's the connecting transit service? Is that high quality per? And in, and in California, there are some very strict definitions of when we say high quality, what they mean. So, you know, it's a, again, it kind of gets back to, yeah, these are great ideas, but sometimes you have to prove it. And, um, you know, is there that supporting infrastructure to really make it work? If I build a bus shelter, a bus shelter in literally the middle of nowhere with, you know, one bus a day, that's not really going to get you the V M T mitigation that the handbook says. You know, so again, not commenting on any project.
Yeah.
Right. But contributing to like Sebastopol does have the, the Sebastopol shuttle that goes around town that allows people to catch it. It's free. It's electric. So there's no greenhouse gas emissions for it. Could you support that service so that it's either more frequent or we know that it's more stable? To me, that would be a reasonable, a very reasonable thing in terms of mitigation.
And if somebody says, okay, we're doing this project and we're going to encourage ride sharing, they have to show how, they can't just say, you know, we're going to put up flyers and encourage everybody, you know?
Yeah, maybe they're providing a parking space and a vehicle for that ride share. So serious stuff. You're not just face.
Got it.
Yeah.
And paired with the monitoring to make sure that it works because if it's not working, then, you know, then that's a problem under.
Yeah, but then what do you do at that point? And then for example.
So that's actually a good question. What does happen at that point, Ian?
And so.
You have a project, it's been built and I'm sorry, this is.
Yeah, no, it's, it's okay.
You said it. So I'm asking the question.
So this is actually not new under the traffic section of CEQA, back under level of service. You'd see certain areas around the tech campuses in Silicon Valley have a trip cap. And so back under level of service, they said, we're only going to have 4,500 trips a day on and off the site. And with monitoring, I think twice a year, and they'd be fined for not doing, not meeting the terms of their cap. And those fines would go towards active transportation or more transit or those sorts of things. What really it comes down to under V M T for most projects are, okay, if you're not meeting your V M T reduction requirements, you have to go install more measures onsite. And usually what we kind of see these days are biannual monitoring, if you pass three times, you're usually good to go. You don't have to keep monitoring because at that point, those behaviors are ingrained into the, the residents or the employees or the visitors that way. So, um, you know, CEQA mitigation, you have to do it and it has to work. So there's kind of a prove it during the preparation of the document. And then there's a monitoring side of it, which is why the bank and exchange program is so helpful. It takes it away from project by project, but until such time that comes, um, you know, again, we kind of have a, you have to prove it. Where I think a lot of developers are actually going at the end of the day is saying, well, if our standard is 7%, we're going to provide enough voluntary, we're going to voluntarily, voluntarily provide 12%. So we provide 12 to get seven, you know, and then, uh, you know, then you kind of know that it's going to work out there. Yeah, and that's a pretty standard mitigation in a lot of cases where sometimes you do two for one or three for one. Wouldn't say you go that far on V M T, but with the uncertainty around it, you know, you're better off, you know, providing that additional layer in a lot of cases. But, you know, the standard is still the standard in order to get down numerically. So that's a choice for others to make, not named me.
No, but I think what you're saying about if, if you get fined, then having a mitigation bank is, makes sense as terms of like, well, what do you do with that money? Obviously you could use it as a traffic impact fund for the city or if there are actual. But then again, you, then the city would, I presume, be responsible for implementing things that.
Yeah, I mean.
Reduce V M T like the new sidewalks or, you know, connecting trail gaps and things like that.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of different ways that can go.
And, um, yeah, I mean, we could talk about this forever. Just a couple more, I think, quick questions. So, um, and you know, I, I understand, um, why, you know, that this measurement is being done. I think it, it, it helps in a lot of ways. In other ways, I can just maybe, uh, since we're so used to, like if you're doing a project and there's two, two cars, garages in every one, um, you know, you can kind of say, okay, well, there's two cars, they're going to be doing this much activity. Miles driven, you're not sure. I mean, is it a, could it be a neighborhood that is, just happens to be retirement? And, and, uh, uh, home, people that work from home versus the opposite of younger families having to drive more to school and stuff. And how do you know that, that data? The high school is an example. Yeah, there, there's a lot of activity, but during the summer it drops off quite a bit. So, um, you know, just, it just, I guess it's just something new to kind of, uh, wrap your head around. So.
Yeah. And I think just in response to that, usually the model is developed to forecast traffic in V M T on a typical weekday. So we mean, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday with good weather, all your local schools are in session. You know, so that's kind of the, the typical day. Sometimes, uh, you know, especially if there's a peak month that's really, really high, sometimes we'll do some additional tests on that. sometimes we'll do some additional tests on that. Like, for example, the, the, the Lake Tahoe model is based on a winter weekend or a winter Friday, not a Tuesday in the middle of May, you know? And so, you know, when, when SCTA is going through the model development process, they are thinking about items like that. Ultimately, it's using the tool as a predictor for travel behavior. But for that typical weekday in a lot of cases.
Yeah, and actually I can, since I'm served on the planning advisory committee for SCTA, that, you know, they actually bring this to us as planning directors to, when the first 2019 model was done. Well, what are those days and timeframes? And of course, we all are all concerned about COVID. But the other components of it that were particular to our county, which is why I kind of like the SCTA model. We all had, like every single city had input into this in, in the county. The, well, you know, the typical summer, you know, weekend is actually a thing here. When you look at the, the, you know, the wineries in the county and the beaches and all of those things. And then, you know, and Healdsburg has that and Sonoma has that. So a lot of people have that. And so what we chose were, yeah, atypical school, as Ian said, but then the other side of it was to make sure we also capture in the summer tourism season. Because we know that that's also a thing here.
All right. So no further comments, I was going to open, yeah, go ahead. I need to take a quick break so we can, I don't know if you want to do the quick break and, or vice versa, the chair can continue.
I think a five minute recess, is that okay?
If that's okay with everybody.
Great.
All right, thank you. And I'm losing power on my. Okay, just a technical question.
So we're gonna call us back from recess?
Oh, yeah. Sorry, call it back to order. Well, no, actually the technical question before I call it back to order. So I'm running out of power very quickly on my iPad. So I can still, you know, talk and, because we have the video of the whole, but I won't have my.
That's okay. You're not required to have video because technically you're on screen from the camera in back.
Yeah, but even if it goes, okay.
Yep.
So, yeah, so I was going to go grab a cable cord, but I, I guess I don't really need to because it's so confusing. Okay, all right, now I'll bring the meeting back to order. All right. So, I don't know if Commissioner Burns has any questions or anything she wants to. But I don't know if she's back because it's a little quicker than five minutes. So I'll give her opportunity if she did want to have some comments. But otherwise, we can open it up for public comments. Is that right? Open for public comment at this point? Yeah?
Yes, yeah, so we are going to open for public comment. If you have a public comment on this item, if you could raise your hand, we'll go. We don't have any more folks in the room, so we'll go to online. And I think Linda, you're the only member of the public remaining. So Linda, do you have a comment on this item? Okay, I.
Take that, is it no?
I am seeing none, so.
I will close public comment and bring it back here. And I don't know, as soon as Patricia Burns.
Sorry, we didn't wait quite as long. We do have a hand raised.
We do, okay.
If we can reopen public comment real quick. All right, Linda, go ahead.
Hey, thank you. Thank you for catching that. So, anyway, if you'll, you know, you should understand the relevance, how this ties in because it's really straightforward. So anyway, the VMT, that's the subject, right? So anyway, like I said, you know, I've got my hands on the, on the impact report for the Canopy project. And it's, VMT is 184 miles daily, I guess. So, anyway, something else, the, the thing that I have a question on. Thing that I have a question on is, is the detail of, of all this additional traffic on Healdsburg Avenue. And so I'm wondering where this is screened in and how this is factored in. So here's the scenario. So Healdsburg Avenue, I figure it's, it's about a mile long and it's at an incline that I'm estimating about 15%. But, and you were talking about seasonality and snow and Tahoe and stuff. And so I'm talking about the same thing here in Sebastopol. During, on the Fourth of July, when the sun just happens to be smack dab as it's sort of setting in the west, people are driving home from work. And this has happened before, and Carrie, I don't know if you were here or not, when it happened. Jeff Weaver was still our police chief then. But anyway, so Fourth of July, the librarian was driving home to Forestville, stone sober after work, and there was a girl in the crosswalk on Healdsburg Avenue. And it was Fourth of July, you know, people were out celebrating, we were celebrating. But anyway, she was, she was in the crosswalk in front of, on Healdsburg Avenue when the sun was directly in the eyes of, of the, everybody. Everybody was driving on Healdsburg Avenue during that time of the year and day. And anyway, she, the girl was in the crosswalk of the block beyond Rotten Robby's. And she was hit. She was on a cell phone, so she wasn't paying attention. And then the, the person, the, it turned out the librarian who was stone sober, hit her. And it turned out to be a horrible, terrible thing, of course, and the girl was thrown across the.
Thirty seconds.
And hit her head. So anyway, what I'm saying is we have increased traffic from like the Canopy and all the other things, the other Horizon Shine that's supposed to be there. Where is this kind of thing factored in? Because it's going to end up in more liability and lawsuits and, and injuries, you know, and lawsuits against the city because this is a foreseeable situation that has already happened. If we go ahead.
Three minutes left, thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, I think that's, no, they're public, so I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission. Anybody here or Deborah has any questions or follow up? Go ahead.
Yeah, another question about, so the thresholds of significance and the category four, which is the atypical and mixed use projects that don't have a threshold. So I'm just like, so what happens if, because it sort of seems like especially for, like if you had a mixed use project that was downtown or something, like that's a positive from a VMT standpoint. So how is that, how does that get evaluated?
So let's say kind of your prototypical residential and neighborhood serving commercial project. You would evaluate the residential portion of that project using the residential and the commercial using the retail. Maybe you screen the retail out because it's small enough. But then the residential analysis should take into account the benefits of mixed uses onsite. So there's a couple of different ways to do that. You can do it in the model. There are some other EPA approved calculator tools out there to help to, to help to address that. As you go towards some other not, I will say non-standard as in uses that are not directly addressed in the state guidance for something like a hospital. That's one that comes up a lot. Or, or, yeah, I think church, church is a little bit easier because that's a little bit kind of parishioner based, kind of a visitor, kind of a retail type establishment. But for a hospital, you'd measure the employees based on employment VMT and the patients based on a retail-ish like metric where are you increasing the accessibility of medical services to the community? If so, your total regional VMT should go down with the project. Same way that if you had, you know, a grocery store in a food desert, the VMT goes down. I will note that we built into the SCTA model a visitor component for wineries and tasting rooms. That took a while. And there is also a hotel land use category in the model. What, how you evaluate that against a threshold of significance is different from plugging the number into the model. But I would note that the SCTA model is unique, that does have those land use categories very thoughtfully put in versus say, the Contra Costa County model doesn't have to worry about winery trips as much. So we can measure it in the model, but in terms of thresholds of significance, that's where, you know, the project applicant's traffic consultant or the city's traffic consultant should interact with city staff to interpret the OPR guidance, interpret the spirit of the guidance and make sure that a metric is being, or a threshold of significance is being developed that ultimately helps the state meet its greenhouse gas targets. That is the legislative intent du jour for selecting a non-standard threshold.
Great. And then my last question is on the screening criteria. This is just something that was kind of curious to me because I'm not quite sure what it's referring to. But it talks about, there are certain things that cannot be screened out. And one of the examples was, is inconsistent with the plan Bay Area? And I'm just wondering what regards to the plan Bay Area with that?
Yeah, so that's getting back to, so that one, so those four sub bullet points apply to the proximity to major transit stop criteria. So no sites in the city as of yet meet that criteria. But where that really comes down to is, does that project cause the city to exceed, cause the city to exceed its RTPSCS housing numbers? That's an issue regardless of screening criteria or anything else. Because once you go past the RTPSCS, oh, sorry, the RTPS, Regional Transportation Plan Sustainable Community Strategy. That is Plan Bay Area 2050. That is the regional housing and transportation plan for the Bay Area, which is prepared amongst many reasons to help demonstrate that the region as a whole can meet its specified greenhouse gas reduction targets. So if you're inconsistency, if you're inconsistent with the RTPSCS, you're inconsistent with the broad regional plan to achieve the state's climate targets under SB 375 and AP 32. That's a lot. That's really in deep.
That was good, that was, I'm very curious.
Can we maybe just do a couple of examples of that and maybe like if you were at a BART station, I'm thinking the MacArthur BART that is set a parking lot next to it forever and you decided to develop, I don't know, five homes? Would that be inconsistent?
I think you're talking about major annexations on the outskirts of the city.
Okay.
Of course, here in Sonoma County, we have a lot of urban growth boundaries. But, you know, thinking about some other projects in the Bay Area that are really large, maybe a large.
Like the new city in Solano County?
Yeah, something like that. The project that shall not be named. For many reasons. But, you know, I think that's, and basically what it's really trying to do in that case is stop sprawl. And that's, and that's kind of really the whole point of the RTPSCS.
Great, thank you. That's very helpful.
Good.
Yeah, so we're really looking at reducing our carbon footprint here. And so we're, as vehicles become cleaner over time, is that going to adjust these if our community is shown to have cleaner cars?
So as of now, the answer is no. And that is because of how the, how the juice in the batteries is developed. I presume it will get more sustainable over time. But there is a question about, you know, we're saying 15%. Is 15% even good enough? The state's missing its climate targets. And some agencies have proposed that maybe 15% needs to change, but it could come back to 15% as more people drive electric. Obviously, we have the, the 2035 internal combustion engine ban here in the state. This is really more about land use and land use pattern efficiency than say what's in the Bay Area air quality management targets that make up thresholds of significance for the air quality and greenhouse gas sections. We're still using VMT, but in the transportation section, when we start dividing by the number of people for per capita, we're talking more about land use and transportation efficiency than pure air quality and greenhouse gas efficiency. It's a, it's a nuance because sometimes you use the same numbers, but sometimes you don't.
Yeah, that makes, that makes a lot of sense to me. Thank you. And just adding one more flight at the airport is going to wipe out a whole lot of clean cars.
I mean, I think it also has like, there's other, there's the greenhouse gas component, but there's also just, you know, making a more walkable community, more bikeable communities, other benefits to that, you know, health benefits and community-based benefits that go beyond like greenhouse gas. So I think a lot of it has, I think there's multiple reasons to do a lot of this stuff. It's not just greenhouse gas reduction. You know, but that may be the overarching goal at this point, but I think they, a lot of these things do bring other benefits to the community.
Well, and healthy and active transportation is part, is one of those three parts of the legislative intents. I think back at the July planning commission meeting where we presented on this, Carrie used the example of the, you know, when the walk sign turns on for a pedestrian, but the lights are still red so the pedestrians can get out into the middle of the intersection first so you can see them. Under level of service, modeling could show that that's actually an impact because cars have to wait longer. Whereas I think we all know that's a major safety improvement. And so, you know, multimodal safety improvements that could sometimes get lost under level of service for CEQA now get through scot-free. And so as federal and state policies change with regards to implementing safety improvements, this is a big way to clear the road, pardon the pun, for those towards, for those types of improvements going forward.
Okay. And I don't know, Commissioner Burns, if you're still with us, if you have any questions? I don't know if she is.
It looks like she, we lost her.
Okay, all right. I know she wasn't feeling well.
That was a connection or, or that.
Yeah, okay. So where do we go from here?
Do we recommend?
Yeah, so what would be great is, I haven't heard any modifications other than the correction of those map labels. The, but I haven't heard any sort of overarching. of those map labels, the, but I haven't heard any sort of overarching, we definitely want to add this, or, you know, hey, we don't want it to be the 15,000 for retail that we have as use permit. I haven't heard any of that. So, I think at this point, yeah, if you wanted to, you do have a quorum, so you could, I think, I believe the staff recommendation was to direct staff to draft a resolution recommending this as the final memo with any changes the commission might have, and we will return at the February 27th meeting with that resolution for the planning commission to formally adopt.
And then it would go.
Minus Ian, he won't be here.
Yeah.
It'll just be a consent item.
Yeah, well, we don't want extra miles, anyway. So, then it would go to city council, right?
Then it will go to city council, yeah. Yeah, and it is tentatively scheduled for city council on March 5th, I believe. I don't even know if you know about that. Okay.
Yeah, good.
It's why it's tentative, but yeah.
I have one other, I have one other typo.
Sure.
On page 15 of the PDF or 12 of the memo. So, this is under proposed screening criteria for land use projects. The second bullet point down, it just reads, city staff retain discretion to deny the use of screening when projects, when the presumption may not be warranted, so just.
Thank you. Yep, got it.
Thank you.
I also sent in a handful of things that I noticed that sort of blipped me while I was reading.
Excellent, thank you.
So, I, I submood what Carrie said. Sorry, dear.
Okay, with the corrections.
With the corrections that we added, yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have motion in the second. Is there any further discussions, or call for the vote?
Okay, Commissioner Ottinger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fritz?
Aye.
And Chair Fernandez?
Aye.
Okay, so that motion passes 3-0 with two absent, and we will return again on the February 27th meeting with the resolution, with all the wherays and whatnots and recommendation for you to vote on.
Okay, and Ian, we really appreciate your insights and knowledge and being here, so thank you for that.
Thank, thank you very much for having me.
Okay, move on to item 7, any subcommittee updates? Okay. Planning Directors' Report.
Thank you, and do you want to talk about the committee appointments? I'm gonna have Susie start off, because the council did have a number of interviews for committees recently, so she's gonna update.
So, the Climate Action Committee gained one new member, Phil Carter, and the SCTA, SCTA also gained Gavin Waters, who is also gonna be representing the Transportation Authority for Sonoma County.
And to be clear, that's the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, our SCTA rep, yeah. So, that is great, that is actually a, we used to have a citizen representative a number of years ago, and that person left, and there was not interest, I believe, when we recruited. It was probably four years ago, and so, he had actually recommended, I believe, that it was really more of a staff function, but with the Active Transportation Plan being updated, our CAC kind of, and several members led the charge of, hey, we should really have someone, and I said, well, if you could do the recruiting, so we have applicants, we'll recruit. And so, that was a great initiative from, or advice from the CAC, and we actually had three applicants, and the council, one was Phil Carter, who basically said, well, I'm happy to be on the CAC and coordinate that way and not be this SCTA rep. And the other one, the council actually asked us to reach out to, to see if he'd be interested in the CAC, since he is certainly interested in those types of issues, so. So, that was a great recruitment. The city council will be doing interviews for the Designer Review Board at an upcoming meeting, and then, they did hear an update on Horizon Shine, and I apologize, with everything going on, I did mean to put that update on the agenda for you for the use permit, and we will get that on your next agenda. Actually, there is going to be another update to city council on next Tuesday, and we will make sure we bring that and any additional information to you on the 27th. And I may actually just get that out to you. Sort of the big happenings, if you haven't heard, St. Vincent de Paul is looking, is still waiting to hear from the state on the Project Home Key grant, but they are kind of hopeful and planning for starting construction sometime late spring. And so, they, the SAVES organization is working very closely with the residents, with the county interdisciplinary team, which includes Department of Health Services and Social Service and their homeless services to find housing, alternative sites for the folks at Horizon Sign. They currently have, I believe it's 22 vehicles, one of which is actually the SAVES office, so that's, you know, not an issue, and, and I apologize, it's 21 or 22 residents. They have a number of options for some of those residents, nothing is confirmed yet, and so they are working very closely and having weekly meetings with city staff, as well as the meetings and working with the county. Our job is, and Police Chief Ron Nelson is going to be assigned to what was previously my role of the homeless coordination, along with Mayor Rich. And as most people know, our police department is a, is a pretty community policing-oriented, and he's been working, and his staff have been working on this, as well as things transition, and so that is an update on that one. So, we did give the report to the city council last Tuesday, it was actually in the first hour, because the SAVES represented had to leave, so I think it was, it was before 8:00 or before 7:00, I can't remember, it was at the beginning of the meeting, more or less, if you did want to listen to that, but again, it will be on next Tuesday's agenda too, with a fresh update based on today's meeting and whatever happens this week in between them. And then, we also provided an update on just the housing and homeless services in Sebastopol in general, and I think the big update for that is the Alderbury Commons is getting close to starting construction to convert those units. The county is also looking to transfer, in the next month or two, I believe, the property to Burbank Housing, to be the property manager and owner, and they are partnering with West County Community Services to do the, the social service aspect of it, the supportive services, and again, with urgency to the Park Village, that certainly makes a lot of sense, and of course, they also provide the city's homeless outreach between city funding and county funding, Maria Rico, and so there's a report from her as well in that, if you're interested. We actually don't have any items for the planning department on next Tuesday's agenda, they were all with the various groupments and everything on the last agenda, and I think, I'm trying to think, are there any major project updates? I don't think there are any. We are anticipating the Canopy would come back at your meeting in March, and so we will come, wanting to be checking for a quorum and all of that, and we'll also check around for a quorum for the 27th, just to make sure for the High Street project, since we know we have a recusal for that. And then, in terms of the planning department transition, I, things have changed a little bit, and then I am going to be continuing to work for the city through April, but it will be fully remote and still part-time, so the same kind of minimum 20 hours a week that I'm working, and I want to appreciate our new city managers and assistant city managers' flexibility in this, hopefully that helps them as well. That was, you know, it is difficult to find an interim director, and especially on somewhat short notice, but, and the thought is, after that, it may transition to an interim director, but that's, obviously, you'll get updates as that happens, but you will see my face, it will just be on Zoom after this meeting, so. And I think that's it, I am, oh, yeah, I think, I think that's it.
Yeah, and then I think we will be doing officer.
Thank you, yes.
And I.
Yes, I missed putting that on this agenda, but per our newly adopted Planning Commission resolution, the election of officers happens the first meeting after appointments, and actually, the Seth and Debbie not being in the room here is probably better that we, I missed putting it on the agenda, but yeah, we'll have that upcoming as well.
Perhaps it might make sense to do that after the High Street meeting?
You know, there is nothing that says, and you as chair have authority, a certain amount of authority over the agenda, that we have to have that transition at the beginning of the meeting. We can do that at the end of the meeting, which usually, that's kind of how the committees that I'm in charge of tend to work anyway, because if I've communicated with the chair any coordination for the night, then it certainly gets.
Oh, goes lost.
Like, today, I talked with Everett about the recusal and the not having a quorum and stuff, I can't do that if I don't know who the chair is, so.
Yeah.
I actually would prefer if it's, if we put it last on the agenda, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, no, I think that makes good sense, especially where there's the possibility that the chair might have to recuse themselves, and the poor vice chair, who is very new, might have thrown in the meeting, so just throwing that out there as a possibility. Yeah, but I think that's a good idea, I've always thought that was kind of awkward in the beginning of the meeting to do the transfer, and then, you know, you kind of started from scratch there. Okay. Questions for planning director? Good, all right. Thank you for this meeting, we will adjourn to the February 27th, and you'll be, I guess, polling us to attendance for the next few meetings.
Yes, and if you, once we end the meeting, you can just let me know directly if you have any issues with the 27th.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.